Good evening, I want to welcome you and call to order this meeting of the Florisville ISD Board of Trustees for this date, April 1st, 2024, at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there's a form of board members present, myself, Joel Odom, Mr. Jason Sivodov, Ms. Bana Reed, Mr. Steven Shawrock, and Mr. Craig Moots. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly published in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Mr. Sivodov will now lead some prayers of your staff, and I will lead us in the prayers.
Mr. Garry. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day. We ask you to be with us as we near the end of this school year. We pray that you be with our students to guide them in making good decisions each and every day of their lives. We ask you to be with us this evening, the board, administration, special guests here tonight, that you help us guide us in making the best possible decisions for our schools and students. And Lord, we ask you to be with us tonight on our journey home, keeping us safe. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You may have seen it. Let the record show that Mr. Marshall Clear has arrived, 6:31 DM.
They can't call y'all like that.
Now, I will recite our FISD vision, mission statement. The FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, confidence. Our mission statement is, FISD is committed to the development of innovative lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service, community engagement, and strategic resource management.
Okay, we will now do a round robin of the board reciting of the FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are, in FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment.
Families are welcome, partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, adaptable individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair and clearly communicates and engaged with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
The trustees provide a student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
Mr. Shawrock will now recite our overview of good governance and code of ethics.
Each month we highlight one of our good governance indicators in code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month for the code of ethics, we are highlighting integrity of character. I will refuse to surrender judgment to any individual or group at the expense of the district as a whole. I will consistently uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and governments, governance procedures. I will not disclose information that is confidential by law or that will needlessly harm the district if disclosed. Our good governance indicator for the month is, the board has a written plan in place for regular review and adoption, reformation of the district's mission, vision, beliefs, and goals.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shawrock. We will now have recognitions for Florisville ISD's students and teacher of the month. Dr. Gilstrap?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to call up Dr. Farnsworth from the high school to recognize two students and our teacher of the month.
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. At this time, if our two students of the month could come up and our teacher of the month, if you guys could stand right here next to me, please. We'll have Amanda right here, and then you can just come on this other side. There we go, perfect. Good evening, Dr. Gilstrap, Dr. Odom, and FISD Board of Trustee members. It is my pleasure to recognize our two students of the month. To my left is Amanda Rodriguez, followed by Jordan Salinas, and then our teacher of the month, Mrs. Rios. I would first like to recognize Amanda. She is the daughter of Joseph and Larissa Rodriguez. She's been in FISD since second grade. Her school activities include National Honor Society, Student Council Officer, Link Crew Leader, Mighty Tiger Band Woodwind Lieutenant, Taffy Officer, and she's qualified for state twice in public speaking. She's an FFA Veterinarian Medical Team member, Princess on the Florisville Royal Court for 23-24 school year. She's an officer for the Junior Catholic Daughters of America, and her future plans include attending Texas A&amp;M San Antonio and becoming a doctor of veterinary medicine. Her teachers said the following. Amanda irradiates with positivity, grace, and compassion both inside and outside of the classroom. Amanda truly puts in a tremendous amount of effort in everything that she does and never lets the adversity of challenges of life get in the way of her success. On top of all of her achievements, she's respected, responsible, and never fails to help out others during a time of need. Amanda is always kind and positive and wanting to help other people. We should all endeavor to be more like her. And last but not least, awesome student. She's not only a good student, but a role model for her peers. She works well with others and with a great attitude. And I present to you Amanda Rodriguez. Our next student of the month is Jordan Salinas. He is the son of Michelle and Eloy Salinas. He's been in FISD schools since kindergarten. He's been vice president of the class of 2024 two different times during his school career. He's been the president of the class of 2024 two times during his school career. He's been inducted into the National Honor Society. He's a member of the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. He's in the top 7% of his class. He served as the varsity soccer captain for two years. He's earned district academic honors the past three years, as well as district defensive MVP for the 2023 soccer season. While playing soccer, he and his team have achieved the bi-district championship last year and district championship this year. He plans to pursue a business degree from Texas A&amp;M San Antonio on a full scholarship this fall. His teachers say, ever since I met Jordan, I knew that kid was going to do great things here at our school. He has done a lot for my soccer team and the young athletes we have. He has been a captain since his sophomore year, and with his help, our program has grown a lot. He is the soccer player that focuses a lot on when he does, and he never needs extra time to complete assignments or projects during practice because of his commitment to the program. Another teacher says, Jordan is a very athletic honor student whom I've known since he was a small child. Jordan will become an honorable, upstanding community member one day, and we can see that that day is today. And another teacher said, Jordan is a great student who thrives both in and outside of the academic setting, excellent student who strives for greatness. I present to you Jordan Salinas. And last but not least is our teacher of the month, Mrs. Maribel Rios Alabarsis. She's been married to her soulmate, who is here tonight, for the past 25 years. She's extremely proud of her two children. They love dogs, they have four of them, one for each person. She serves as a National Honor Society Council member. She is a member of our LPAC Committee. She has been at Florisville High School since 2016, and Ms. Rios teaches Spanish. What she loves most about her job is watching her students get interested in learning about her culture and language. Ms. Rios epitomizes being a collaborative team player. We often use her for testing situation, language translations, anywhere on campus where we're needing an extra hand, she is always ready to help. She was the finalist for our teacher of the year. In fact, the other person got one more vote than she did for teacher of the year. So in my mind, she is one of our top, most respected teachers on campus, and when we presented her to the student body during a pep rally, she got a huge yell from all the students in the crowd. So I present to you, Mrs. Rios.
Well, Amanda, congratulations for one NHS Council member and doing all the things you do with Taffy. We all know Dr. Odom is a mighty tiger band. We all do FFA, peanut, Texas A&amp;M. I'm really proud of you and everything that you're doing. You showed a lot of character, and what we need to do as students to push forward, so I'm really proud of you. Jordan, VP of your class, president of your class, same thing, NHS on top of it, top 7%, doing soccer. So not only are you doing things in the classroom, both of you, we are doing things outside of the classroom, which is really awesome. So we're super proud of you as well. Ms. Rios, being the council member on top of just being a teacher, but pushing these students to be a council member, teaching the Spanish, you know, I've been in the military 17 years, Spanish has carried me in a lot of different countries. Even if you don't understand all of it, those little bit of Spanish carries you in a lot of other countries, so you just have a little language. So I think it's really great that you're pushing that on the students, and thank you for what you do, and all y'all deserve it, and I'm proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You in the middle or?
Perfect.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we got trained while we were sharing your verse.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Looking forward to seeing you.
Impressive.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
We now have our boys and girls powerlifting recognitions presented by Coach Martinez.
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap and Board of Trustees. I appreciate the opportunity to recognize some of our athletes, our student athletes who have gone above and beyond this year. I'm really excited for the programs and all their hard work and dedication. I personally haven't had an opportunity to coach any of these student athletes, but I have been able to observe their hard work and all the things that they do, they put into their programs to make them successful. Really impressed with each and every one of them. I'll turn it over to their coaches to talk a little bit more about them, and I also want to recognize their coaches and all their hard work. Spend a lot of time away from their families to give back to our kids, and that says a lot about who they are and how important their kids and their program are to them. So I'll start with Coach Ramos for our boys' powerlifting and Coach Salazar for our girls'.
Powerlifting.
Right there.
Right there.
I will see you.
three seniors that have done a great job leading our team the past couple of years. I mean, this is my second year with them, but they've set a great example for the other boys that have been in the program and also the girls, because we've worked together so closely. So losing them this year, I know they're going to go on and do great things. Bert's going to go into the military. Exodus and Danny are still deciding on whether they want to continue competing, either that in powerlifting or football, or and then going off onto college and deciding what to do on them. But whatever they do plan to do or decide to do, I know they're going to do great things. So very proud of these boys, and there's going to be a big void of leadership that's going to, we're going to have to try to figure out how to fill out with our younger guys and develop them and to try to make up for losing these three. So very proud of these guys. They competed really well all season long, they're great. Without them, because we had so many meets, there are certain meets where like I gave them a break and didn't compete. So those meets, there was definitely a difference when they weren't there competing for our, you know, our points and our standings and stuff like that. So it was definitely very important to have them competing, the meets that they did, competing, you know. Very successful, made it to regionals, very high standing in regionals. They were all very close, they all made their automatic qualifying state totals at the regional meet, and so they all then qualified automatically to go to the state meet. Danny got third in his region, for his weight class in the regionals, and then Exodus also got third. AJ got his regional qualifying total, I think, with two lifts left to go in the meet, so he was still, he was there, you know, not too much struggle for that. At the state meet, they competed very hard, they all hit amazing PRs and raising their totals by a lot of weight and were doing great things. It came down to the wire for Danny, he was pushing to go for third place, and without it, he ended up getting sixth place on his last lift. But it was a big struggle, he's fighting, you know, he tore callus off of his hand, so there was a struggle if that was going to hold up during that last lift. You know, he fought hard for it, and he, you know, he put it all on the line and tried to get that third place, and it didn't work out that way that day, but the difference was between third place was 10 pounds from third to sixth place. So it was literally, if he got that weight, he would have won it by 30 pounds, but now he only missed it by about 10, 5 to 10 pounds. So he possibly could have got fifth place by five pounds. So it was very close, and I was trying to tell him and keep his hopes, or keep his, you know, his mood up that that kind of close competitiveness on the meet is basically like a day-off situation, not, you know, what it is in the long term. So Exodus, I mean, throughout the season, I think he raised his total about 200 pounds, and he hit a PR of 700 pounds on squat, which is great, because I think at the beginning of the season, we were, you know, fighting to get to 600, and so getting up to 700 is a great lift for him, so. And AJ, I think he's been PRs where he was struggling with bench early on, and then we figured out some things in the regionals, and he was starting to push up some weight very good. So I'm very proud of these boys and the way they competed and, you know, represented our school.
AJ, Exodus, we know how your determination is throughout their year. We saw you on the football field and the weight room. Thank y'all for representing yourselves, Florisville, and the community. AJ, we wish you the best of luck in your next endeavor to sign up for the military. Thank you for your service there. Exodus, Danny, whatever y'all choose to do, you're going to represent yourself, your family, and our community, and we appreciate everything y'all have done. Best of luck to all of you.
Thank you.
Ready, one, two, three, one more, one, two.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you for your service.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good evening. So I've been very fortunate for the last six years to have girls qualify for regionals and state every year. These ladies put in a lot of work that people don't see, and as you can see, I mean, it's, they do tremendous every year. This year, we had a successful regular season, did well at pretty much every invitational meet we were at, and we qualified 15 for regionals. I'm going to talk about Gabrielle Anesto first. She's only a sophomore, so I expect really good things about from her the next few years. So Gabby lifted for me in equipped and unequipped. Unequipped was a new division introduced this year, so basically they don't use any of the equipment that generally they've used in the past. It's considered raw lifting. I saw how strong she is naturally, so I said, what the heck, let me try her, see how she does. And she went all in on it. She is our regional runner-up. As a sophomore, she had a total of 755 between squat, bench, and deadlift. So being the regional runner-up, she advanced to the state meet, and she placed fourth at the state meet as a sophomore with a total of 785. So she did really, really well considering, she had no idea what she was going to do with unequipped, sorry. Elena Merced is a junior. She's actually our regional champion in her weight class, so it was the same thing with her. She's been an equipped lifter, I decided to try her out. She did well, and then she won the regional title as a regional champion in her weight class. She had a 695 total, qualified for state as our regional champion, and then she was a fourth-place medalist at state with a 720 total. Both these young ladies are two-time regional qualifiers, and they are also first-time state qualifiers and came home with medals. So I'm very proud of them to see how they did, and them returning to me next year gives me, you know, makes me excited, because they set the bar high for themselves. Kaitlyn Padalaki, she is a four-time regional qualifier and a two-time regional medalist and a two-time state medalist. She is our regional runner-up in her weight class with an 860 total. She's an equipped lifter, so she gets to put on all that fun gear, knee wraps, and tucked into suits and everything that's very uncomfortable, but she does work in it. At state, she is our state runner-up. She placed second with a 7, sorry, 85 total. She also will be competing at William Jewel College next year. She signed her letter of intent, so I am 100% sure we're going to see her at the national level next year competing, and hopefully meddling and bringing that recognition back to Florisville. So these are our three state medalists. I was very proud that we took three and we came home with some nice hardware, they're all displaying them right now. Kaitlyn, I'm going to brag on a little bit, because at the Buta Johnson, our first meet of the season, she set the records in bench, squat, and deadlift and overall total and won best lightweight lifter at the very first meet of the season, so that was very impressive considering it was the first meet and we didn't know how we were going to do as a team overall. So these three ladies, they work very hard, they're also part of other extracurriculars, FFA, band, agriculture, everything else. Now, Kirsten Newman, at the end, since we have also our all-state academic team certificates, she came in and she helped our team tremendously when I needed her. She's a senior, she's graduating as well. She did receive second-team all-state academic from the THSWPA. So it's not easy coming in your senior year and starting over, but she did extremely well and represented Florisville and our team extremely well in everything. Kaitlyn received first-team all-state academic. So I can only nominate two seniors, or I can only nominate seniors, these are the only two seniors I have, and both of them receive accolades for their academics as well. So they're going to be missed. It's going to be, you know, a good rebuilding season with our younger ones, but I also have some great role models for our younger girls to look up to.
Kaitlyn, Kristen, for what everything y'all do to maintain your grades and keep those up is tremendously impressive. Thank y'all for what y'all do, and leaving Florisville High School a little better than when y'all entered and setting expectations higher for the younger classmen. Great job on y'all's end on that. So all of y'all, thank y'all for what y'all do, Florence representing yourselves, the community again, and the school. Tremendous work to go to state and bring back some hardware, it's pretty impressive. I mean, not a lot of people can say they do that, but thank y'all for what y'all do and y'all's commitment and dedication to the program. Thank you.
One, two. One, two.
Thank you.
You're so kind. You're so kind.
Congratulations, we've got two more years.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We will now recognize our girls' basketball academic all-state.
Yes, sir.
Being able to watch these kids compete on the court and getting to watch them this spring, and I know one of them runs track, it's no surprise that they excel in the classroom as they do on the court. I'll turn it over to Coach Leonard to recognize our academic all-state girls' basketball team.
Dr. Gilstrap, the school board, first off, thank y'all very much. I mean, you know, one thing I'd like to share, we as educators, coaches, administrators, you know, our goal is to prepare our students for college, whether they go or not. That's not, that's not our decision. I can't say this young lady's not going to go to college. I have to prepare for that as an educator and as a coach. And these two young ladies epitomize the definition of student athletes. Both of them earned second-team Texas High School Coaches Association, second-team all-state, academic all-state, which really shows their dedication in the classroom and on the court. You all know that we had an extremely successful season on the court this year, going to the regional quarterfinals, and these two young ladies were instrumental in that. But to put it, to go to class, to get up at 5:00 in the morning, be at practice at 5:45, and give everything that they had and to have such success, and then go to class and excel in the classroom, you know, as a coach, as an educator, I can't be more proud of these young ladies. When you hired me two years ago, I inherited an outstanding group of young ladies, and I couldn't be more proud. So first off, Giovanni Johns, second-team girls' basketball academic all-state from Texas High School Coaches Association. Second, Destiny Spencer, second-team girls' basketball academic all-state from Texas High School Coaches Association as well.[1643.54]
Dr. Gilstrap, school board, first off, thank y'all very much. I mean, you know, one thing I'd like to share, we as educators, coaches, administrators, you know, our goal is to prepare our students for college, whether they go or not. That's not, that's not our decision. I can't say this young lady's not gonna go to college. I have to prepare for that as an educator and as a coach. And these two young ladies epitomize the definition of student athletes. Both of them earned second-team Texas High School Coaches Association, second-team all-state, academic all-state, which really shows their dedication in the classroom and on the court. You all know that we had an extremely successful season on the court this year going to the regional quarterfinals, and these two young ladies were instrumental in that. But to put it, to go to class, to get up at 5:00 in the morning, be at practice at 5:45, and give everything that they had and to have such success, and then go to class and excel in the classroom, you know, as a coach, as an educator, I can't be more proud of these young ladies. When you hired me two years ago, I inherited an outstanding group of young ladies, and I couldn't be more proud. So first off, Giovanni Johns, second-team girls' basketball academic all-state from Texas High School Coaches Association. Second, Destiny Spencer, second-team girls' basketball academic all-state from Texas High School Coaches Association as well.
Giovanni, Destiny, I think congratulations is an understatement. Y'all just, y'all have done so well in representing Florisville in yourselves and your team to get up and do what your coaches ask y'all to do so early, all those hours, your families. It takes a lot, and I know it's just not basketball. Y'all are involved in so much more. So to upgrade or to uphold those grades is, make proud as a parent and to see young ladies like y'all keep it up. So show the other kids, show your teammates, show your students, the other students around you, what y'all can do, what can be proved. So congratulations. Y'all just keep it up and look forward to the future. Good job. Thank y'all.
All right, people would like to leave at this time of May, and it looks like they've already taken me up on my offer. Out the door. Very good. All right. Ms. Petrie, do we have any public comments? All right. Now continue with our reports and updates. Dr. Gilstrap?
Yes, more members included, superintendent report this month. Couple of updates. First of all, in March, the end of March, we were able to visit each campus and announce our teachers and parent professionals of the year from each campus. That was a great opportunity to surprise them, see their look on their face of not only surprise, but also gratefulness, gratitude, because every one of them work hard, and they all, they all deserve it, but these ones that were selected really will, really are gone above and beyond. And so we will be recognizing all of them from each campus at our regular May board meeting. Instead of our students and teacher of the month, we'll have our teachers of the year recognition. And then finally, at the banquet, employee banquet on May the 16th, we will make the announcement for teacher and parent professional of the year from secondary and elementary. Throughout the spring semester, our students have been involved in many different extracurricular activities. Just recently, our Mighty Tiger Band competed in district symphony concert competition. They got all ones. I'll also note that middle school got all ones. Ms. Petrie's son's involved in that, so she wanted to make sure of mention that. So it's not only at the high school, it's at the middle school as well. Both soccer teams just finished up the playoff runs last Friday. They had outstanding seasons. They went a couple of rounds deep, ran into some tough competition there. Our one-act play has just recently advanced to area competition, so that'll be coming up later in April. And of course, FFA, they continue to dominate in different competitions all over the state. So a lot of great things going on. There's, there's so many that I'm sure I'm forgetting one or two or more than that. But also, I wanna just kinda bring your attention, every year, if you haven't heard of it, the UIL has the Lone Star Cup. And what they do is they track, they keep points for different UIL activities and how schools, how high schools compete in those and the results of their seasons. And it's anything UIL. It's athletics, it's fine arts, it's academics, it's everything. Currently, right now, through basketball season, we were ranked 22nd out of all the 4A high schools in the state of Texas. So out of 200 and 200-plus schools in the state of Texas, we're currently 22. Obviously, with the success of soccer, we'll, we'll be expecting that to go up. And so by the end of the year, it would be an awesome and great accomplishment to finish very high up there in that, in that contest. It's not always what we're always looking for, but that success out on the field in every competition is always good to see our kids compete. So development of our random student drug testing program continues. Mr. Schröder's gonna be hosting a forum, a public forum, for community members and families to receive some information about the details of the process and also to take some feedback as we continue to develop that. That is not final, but we are in the development phase. A second forum will take place before we make any recommendation to the board. So the community and the parents will have an opportunity to see the details of that plan before we proceed. We, we still are on track to implement that for the 24-25 school year. So I just wanna let you know that those meetings are coming up. We're gonna have a budget workshop on Monday, April the 27th, here, here at 6:00 in the evening. The agenda will include a TASB update on the compensation review that we had done, also an update on our current budget. As you know, we are having, we're being assigned state values from the comptrollers, so that, that is going to affect this year's budget as well as next year. So we wanna give the board a budget, a current budget update, as well as where we are in the development of the fiscal '25 budget. As everyone is aware, there are limited optional, or excuse me, operational revenues that are coming in, and so we're gonna have to make some priorities. I wanna be real clear with that. I've talked to the principals, I've talked to the staff whenever it comes up, that we are gonna have to tighten the belt, and we're gonna have to make sure we're making some tough decisions on priorities as we move forward in our budget. We're gonna have our Dreammakers Banquet on Monday, April the 29th at 6:30 at the high school cafeteria. This is, again, an opportunity for those top 10 graduates to really stop what they're doing during this busy time of year and say thank you to somebody that affected them in such a positive way in their education somewhere along the line, whether it's a teacher or an elementary teacher, secondary. We've had bus drivers, we've had custodians, we've had all kinds of people that made an impact, and it's a great opportunity for those students to just stop, be recognized for being in the top 10, but also to say thank you and show gratitude for the ones that really make a difference in their life. That means a lot to the employees. It means something to the kids, but it really means even more to the employees to have that recognition. As you know, TASB will be hosting our SLI in San Antonio in June. We've been going to that for a couple of years. It's a great opportunity to get your continuing education hours if you can't get it elsewhere. As a part of that, we will have the EISO training, ISO training, and what is that, Ms. Petrie, again?
Evaluating and Improving Student.
Evaluating and Improving Student. That is a required training every other year. It has been revamped, so now all board members are gonna have to, have to have that some point in time during the year. You can get that at the SLI. If you're not gonna be there for that, there's other opportunities, so you'll need to make sure you get with Ms. Petrie on getting that lined up before the end of the year. As we have in the past, the district's gonna shift to summer hours beginning on Monday, May the 27th. That's actually Memorial Day, so we're actually, we close that day, but that week, we will begin our summer hours, and that'll go through Friday, July the 26th. So Friday, July the 26th will be the last Friday that we're off. We will operate office hours from 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Thursday, but our employees will continue to work 40 hours a week, so that we work in four tens, but we're gonna get a total of 40 hours in to those four days. We will be communicating these dates and times throughout the district on our website and posting it elsewhere to make sure our community and parents know of those changes for the summer. Just a reminder, graduation is Friday, the 24th of May at 7:30. We'll make sure the board members are at the Tigers Den by 7:00 that evening. If you have any questions about that, please let me know, but all board members are expected to be there so they can present diplomas to those graduates. It's such a, that's the culminating event for the school district. That's the best event of the, of the year, in my opinion, because that's what it's all about, is graduating seniors. So it's always exciting to have board members be a part of that as well. Next month, in the May agenda, we will include the superintendent evaluation. This is an opportunity to provide feedback to me on how I'm performing, as well as how the district's doing. At your desk this evening is included in your packet, an evaluation instrument, and a few resources. Portfolio will be coming in the, in the coming weeks. Still trying to finalize that, and I will get that to you digitally before the regular May meeting. Dr. Odom's requested that each board member complete the evaluation independently, and then you can return that in the sealed envelope provided directly to him, or you can turn it in to Ms. Petrie, and she'll make sure that she, that Dr. Odom gets that by the 22nd of April. So by our budget workshop, you can have that complete, give that to him. That'll give him a couple of weeks to tally all that up and get ready to present that in a closed session with the board as a part of superintendent evaluation. Beginning today, actually, April 1st through August the 31st, per policy DC Global, the board delegates the superintendent authority to offer personnel contracts, so just a reminder of that. We'll be providing employment updates, regular monthly, and be included in the superintendent report, so I have included that in this month's report. This month does include all of our teacher recommendations and the letters of recommendation from our principals regarding any teacher contracts on their campuses. So those have been included. Again, it doesn't require board action, but we will, in the coming days, be sending out those contracts if there are no questions this evening. Also included are our enrollment and attendance numbers. Enrollment continues to stay above 4,000, so 4,041, that's as of last Wednesday. And then our attendance is running year-to-date at 92.56. This is just above where we budgeted for the year, so we're doing well as far as enrollment and ADA for the year. We've had, we've taken our hits this year, especially in the spring semester, in January and February due to some illnesses, and now we're fixing to get into springtime and testing and everything else that comes with that. So our attendance is, is gonna be up from where we were last year, and it still needs to get better, but we're improving. There are a couple of reminders there, some important events. Also included with the superintendent report is the March to May event calendar, and you'll see that divided by month. There, there's some strikeouts, those are the ones that have already taken place. Also, the ones in blue, if it's an item in blue, I encourage you to please give it to Ms. Petrie or myself, so we can RSVP for those events. A lot of those are banquets where they may include a meal or something like that. We wanna make sure that your name is appropriately on that list so that you can get that invitation. Otherwise, it's just, please feel free to attend any and all events that you can get to, because I know there's plenty, plenty of them to go around this time of year. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. This is not when I present the blended learning report.
Dr. Gilstrap, Dr. Odom, board, thank you for having me here tonight to speak to you about our blended learning journey and how we'll be sustaining our work, because the grant does come to an end this year. So we wanted to tell you the journey we've been on and our plans for moving forward. So when we began developing our strategic plan, we included in that strategic plan student-centered instruction. However, we were already researching blended learning as an approach to that. And so as we were doing the strategic plan, first strategic plan, we were also applying for the TEA and the Raising Blended Learners Grant, and we were fortunate in that we received both of those grants. Coming out of COVID, Raising Blended Learning delayed their implementation, but TEA gave us the option to go ahead and move forward. We knew we were gonna have some big gaps because of COVID, so we took TEA up on it, and we went ahead and...
Is that O going out in that thing? Is that what?
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't doing something wrong. So we took TEA up on that, and we really focused on our adaptive software to work on those gaps. We focused on fidelity of implementation and providing meaningful learning experiences for our staff, on instructional strategies, on data, and on planning, so that we'd be ready to go the following year with TEA, or with the Raising Blended Learning Grant. The TEA grant, the, the Raising Blended Learning Grant began 2021, which was nice because TEA grant ended in May of 2022. So they overlapped, which was a nice segue, but our work stayed consistent. Nothing changed. In there, we also had our second strategic plan. Again, what we were doing aligned very nicely with that, so that we were able to sustain our efforts over time. Throughout the entire process, our goal, when we started, more than half of our students across the district were reading below grade level, and that was pre-COVID. So we really knew we needed to focus on improving student achievement, but at the same time, providing the student-centered instruction to make the instruction they were getting more engaging and get students a little bit more excited about coming to school every day. So some of the moves we made. One of the big things that we did was we made sure that everything we did really aligned with the district's strategic plan. That ensured that this became the way we teach in FISD, and it wasn't something extra. It wasn't seen as an initiative that I could wait, I can wait it out, and it's gonna go away in a year or two, and I don't have to worry about it if I'm a teacher. It really was the way we do things in FISD. It provided us the focus we needed to really hone in on the strategies that we needed to work with on teachers and start talking about data, not by a, by classroom level or by grade level, but really start to talk about data by student, by standard. This allowed our teachers to really understand where were the gaps, what were the skills students were missing. Then the other thing that we did last year was we conducted a strategic review and abandonment of instructional materials. So we looked at all of the materials and resources being used in the classroom, and this was two-part. One, it was to ensure that we were being fiscally responsible, but then two, we wanted to make sure that what we were using was high-quality, good rigor, aligned to standards, and aligned to what we, aligned to the teaks, okay? We also began to pilot our Florisville ISD instructional learning model, which is called the file. This is key because this is our next steps. And again, this allowed us to shift conversations away from the grant and pilot classrooms, and so it's, we were no longer talking about pockets of teachers. With the file, we're able to talk about instruction in Florisville, whether you are a kindergarten teacher, you're a middle school science teacher, or a high school algebra teacher, it applies to everybody. So what are some of the successes we're seeing? We are seeing that with the, through the intentional use of blended learning instructional best practices, we're seeing a difference in student ownership, so they're, they understand why they're working on what they're working on, and they have more voice and choice in that. And then at the same time, we're making academic gains because teachers are able, again, to identify what the individual student's learning needs are. So let's talk about what that translates into, in, in data. Yes, we are seeing growth across the grade level, but really what I wanna talk about is the cohorts. So if you look at, we start with third grade. In spring of 2021, we had a 60% passing rate approaches grade level. The following year, that same group of students went up to 73%. Spring last year, it was up to 75%, showing that two, over two years, they grew, that number grew by 15%, and in one year, it grew by 2%. When we look at the fourth graders from 2021, again, we see growth, and over two years, they grew 26%. Fifth grade also saw growth across the cohorts and grew two-year change of 9%. Sixth grade started at 52%. That number's kinda hard to see up here with that bowl, but they're currently, last year, they were at 83%, so they had a 31% increase over time. And then seventh grade is started at 63%, and they were at 80% the following year. We go to high school, again, we're looking at those cohorts. It's a little bit smaller view because they only take English I and English II, but we can still see that we went from 55, across the grade level, we saw growth. But then when we look at the, the gold color, again, we go from 55 to 58% and 49 to 66%. So what does this tell us? It tells us, it tells us we're doing things well at the grade level, and we're improving, and every year, that grade level does better. But when we look at the cohort, that tells us we're closing gaps, and students that may have been struggling before are getting stronger because we're targeting those needs and closing those gaps. So that's why that data is important, that we look at it that way. Some of the other successes we've seen over the course of the, the program is we've had the opportunity to showcase what we're doing. The past two years, we've had blended learning showcases in the district, where we've had visitors from across the state come see us, and, and that was really positive. And then in January, the leadership team goes to a leadership convening hosted by Charles Buck Foundation, who is our funders for the grant, and the CA Group, which is our implementation consultants. In January, we had 18 school districts attended and multiple education service centers who were learning more about blended learning, and we were one of five districts asked to present at that... present at that meeting, specifically talking about the systematic changes we've made to improve student learning. So where do we go from here? Like I said, the grant is ending this year, but our work doesn't. We have the Florisville ISD Learning Experience, or the file, this is becoming our district-wide implementation this year. This is how we're rolling out the best practices aligned to blended learning, because they're also in the file to every content, every grade level, so that all of our students can hopefully start to see the benefits of it. This will allow us to both sustain and expand our efforts over time, so that eventually engaging rigorous student-centered instruction is simply the way we do it in Florisville ISD, the way students learn. It's no longer part of a grant, it's how we teach. That's all I have tonight, and I thank you again for allowing me to be here, and I'll take any questions you might have.
I just want to say, whenever I came aboard, I said, "Board meetings, the staff meetings", of course, I saw we were doing blended learning, and I thought, "Well, we use a lot of computers." And Ms. Knight very quickly corrected my thinking, but most importantly, she took me out and showed me what was going on in classrooms, and this is such a model, and it's difficult. I'm not going to say it's easy, it's difficult on the teachers for planning purposes, it's a whole mind shift on how we teach, which is never easy, but it's what's best for kids. It really is. And I was very excited to have my son come in and be a part of the blended learning process, but it is truly what we've talked about in education that I haven't experienced until I came here to Florisville. And so it really personalizes it for the kid, they take ownership of it, they have a greater understanding of where they are, where they want to be, where their gaps are, and it really customizes it to their ability. And so kudos to you, to the Buck Foundation for their efforts to fund these grants, but to our staff for implementing it. It is not easy. Our administrators, they've had those discussions and those conversations with teachers, and I know sometimes those are frustrating conversations, because it is a change in a mindset, but I want to make sure I applaud our staff for the way they've implemented it, because it is truly what's best for kids.
And I see on television where San Antonio, their fourth grade, they're not in their level, and I'm going, "We are." I want to go to scream at them, you know, and it makes me feel very proud that we are, like I said, filling the gap and going beyond that extra step, where they're not behind.
Right.
Seeing this over the last so many years, you know, we're just moving this program, that program, like you said earlier, this one's sticking, and it's good, and the question is, what are we going to do in the future? What do you need from us as far as, we're not getting grants anymore, what are we going to have to start looking forward to down the road? That's the key.
So we've already started.
Because it's going well, and I mean, I can see the kids, like you said, yours, mine, it's going well.
So we've already started to make some of those systematic changes, and that's part of what we've talked to other districts about, was because we knew the grant had an end life on it. We planned ahead, and the instructional model that we've created helped set us up for that. So now everything we do, for example, my title has changed, it's not blended learning anymore, it's now coordinated professional learning, so that I can encompass the file training, and everything we're doing, we ground back to the file and those best practices and those strategies. So for example, this summer, when we're talking about what, this morning, we were talking about what trainings to offer this summer, we looked at, okay, where are we still seeing some room for growth? Where do we really need to focus in? And then we're providing those PDs. So really, it's not, you know, we've had to be a little bit, we were, we didn't put a, the two things, the two main expenses that came out of the grant were my salary, half of my salary, and the software. And so that was part of that strategic abandonment last year. We're reevaluating it this year to see, are we, do we still need it? Do we still need it for the entire campus? Do we need it for a smaller grade, so that we can make sure we're not just buying it to buy it? And then also, knowing that that was originally half my salary was going to need to be refunded differently, there was plans made for that as well.
Is there anything more that we can improve, or like move forward, that we might need something more?
I think it's training, we're continuing to train our teachers. One of the things that's been critical, in my opinion, has been allowing them to see it. So as we bring on new teachers, one of the things that I've done over the last few years, once COVID restrictions lightened up, was taking teachers to other districts where they could see other approaches, and sometimes getting them outside their comfort zone, they're going, "Wow, I can do that," or "That's really neat, I hadn't thought about doing it like that." And so just making sure that we can provide those opportunities. I will say that our campuses are great, and my elementaries do a phenomenal job about making sure that their teachers, they've identified which classrooms are their high flyers, and they're making sure they're given learning walk opportunities for those other teachers to go in there. So I think it's important that we continue to provide the support in terms of the training, but then also the opportunity to see it. And then the second PLC period that we implemented this year was critical, because that gives them time built into their day to do some of that heavy work that, because like Dr. Gilstrap said, there's a lot that goes into it. Looking at the data, then planning it, and I'm not planning one assignment for my whole class, I'm doing multiple assignments to really meet the student needs. Having that second period is critical. So I would say, you know, protecting that, in my opinion.
I just want to know.
Yeah, yeah, because otherwise, otherwise, we'd be asking those teachers to do that on their conference period, or after school, or before school, or on planning days, and that gets really hard, and that's where you start to see teacher burnout. And so, you know, something that may seem like, "Oh, what's that for?", that's critical for those teachers.
So the results were impressive, but I imagine even as a parent, they can see the changes in their kid, when you said from third grade to fourth grade, and fourth grade to fifth grade. So we're seeing it, I'm sure they're seeing it as well.
Well, and the students can talk to it, so they can say, "I'm working on learning, I'm working on this because I need to. I'm better at this, I'm not good at this," and so they're able to communicate that better. So, you know, I think of when my kids were young, and I'd say, "What are you working on in school?", and they'd tell me, and I'd say, you know, "Well, I'm doing this worksheet." "Why? Because the teacher told me to," or "They gave it to me, that's our assignment today." These kids are better able to understand and explain, "I'm working on this skill, and here's why." And they can show you data. You know, we'll ask them when we go into do walks, and we just did focus groups with them, and we'll say, "Well, how do you know?" "Well, I look at my test score, and I scored a one, so I know a one tells me I need to do this," or "A two tells me I need to do that." So they're able to articulate that.
They have ownership in it.
Mm-hmm.
That's great. And this right here is becoming our model for teaching Florisville, this is what we're going to do at Florisville. So the onboarding process is really key. How do you train new teachers? Whether they're new to the profession, and this is along with all the other things that come with a new job, they also need to work on this, and then those that are coming with experience from other districts implementing this process. So what do we need? We need to make sure that we're training, we're adequately preparing the new staff coming in, that they're buying into this. And then I think it's huge, too, the visits to some of those other camps, because so many times, teachers, "I don't understand, I don't understand," and then all of a sudden, they go see somebody, and they're like, "Oh, now, now, I see, I can do that, I can do that."
And it's even powerful for me to take like a sixth-grade teacher that says, "My kids aren't going to do this, they're too, they're too mature for that. Okay, let me go show you what they're doing in fifth grade." Or if a fifth-grade teacher says, "This is too hard, you know, my kids are never going to do this. Okay, let me go show you what they're doing in middle school." Same thing with high school, we can take those, we've taken high school teachers to middle school, so that it's like, "Look what you're coming, look, look how they're being trained, look what they're used to, look what's coming to you in a year or two down the road." And so that's, that's where, even if it's even within our district, that's powerful.
Huge. Thank you, Ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Next on the agenda is item number five, action items. First action item is consent agenda.
Board members, we have our typical consent agenda. We did get the financials in. I know today's the first, so kudos to Ms. Engel for getting those in to the package today. We do have three items that are not typical in the consent agenda, but they are routine. We have our renewal of our retainer with Walsh, Gallegos, Trevino, Russell, and Kyle, this is our attorneys. We are required by board policy to have a retainer with an attorney, so we do have that approval, which is an annual approval. Last month, we recognized our TAFI students for making it to state. We also have individuals that are going to nationals this summer, which does require out-of-state travel, so we have that trip request on here for approval, since it is out-of-state and requires board approval. And lastly, we have a donation from JR Site Works, they're donating $1,500 to our softball activity account. So we want to thank JR Site Works for their donation, or excuse you, not softball, soccer program, girls soccer program. So $1,500 to the soccer program is a donation, which does require board action. If there's not any questions, administration recommends the board approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a motion to accept the recommendation, administration? Okay? Mr. Shaw, Rock makes a second. Mr. Reed makes a second. Any question? Okay, all in favor, they've been on my raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero. All right. Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. Our next item is to consider approval of strategic facility plan, also by Dr. Gilstrap. Yes, I want to turn it over to Casey Sledge from Sledge Engineering, but just to kind of give you a brief, a little background, in 2022, the board approved the strategic plan 2.0, and the current goals that were recommended from various committees, including community members, families, teachers, students, administrators, a pretty large group that we had. Based on goal number four, which was strategic resource management, from there, the board really wanted us to explore a long-range planning process, which identified five facility needs, which I don't need to get into, but also resulted in two adopted recommendations to the board. One was to address overcrowding at the elementary campuses in a very timely manner, which we did a few steps opening this campus, but also select a firm to develop the long-range master facility plan, which is which we engaged with Sledge Engineering. So this evening, we have Casey Sledge from Sledge Engineering here to provide the final recommendation for our strategic facility plan. The recommendation this evening is to approve the plan. There are some dollar amounts included in the plan, but the motion tonight, or the action tonight, is to approve the plan as is presented, and I'll let Mr. Sledge talk about that a little bit more. This will allow us to move forward this fall with planning for details of priorities and how we will financially support implementation of the plan. So again, the dollar amounts that are included for the presentation are for references only. They are current, they are current estimates and do not, should not be taken in the future. But again, I do think it is relevant to include some of that information, because it gives its scope, it gives the overall plan some scope. So I want to turn it over to Mr. Sledge.
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. Good evening, board. Great to be here. A good day to be in Florisville.
Great day.
Well, hey, it's exciting for me to be here for this facility plan. I love facilities, I get a little excited about these things. So we've talked a few times to the board already, the board, the staff, and team, and so today's a big day for this facility plan, because really the culmination of this plan is upon us, this report is complete. All we're asking for tonight is for you to consider adopting this plan, and for everyone in the room, there's no regulatory reason to adopt the plan, you don't have to do it, it's not a policy or law or anything. We think it's a great idea for you and future boards and staff to help you solidify a plan and just move forward, as Dr. Gilstrap was mentioning. So this report is 91 pages long, and it does not include the appendices of survey results and things like that. So you're welcome, I'm not going to go through all 91 pages this evening, but feel free to ask me questions.
It has been included in the pack.
Yeah. I mean, I'll do it if you like, you don't have to. So one idea, I did want to just show you actual pages from the report on purpose, and I, I've just bookmarked a few of the pages that I want to run down, but I'm not going to dive through every campus again unless you have questions or want to talk about it. So the first is the title page. I do want to point out, this is an engineering document, it's going to be stamped, the stamp's covered up right now, because it's a draft, you will stamp this when you're done. So it formalizes it a good bit, it signifies that it's a professional document, and we're proud of that. So my first highlight for you, I jump to page eight, and this section is the part that is the introduction, and the report won't have my stars and circles, that's just for this evening. But I want to point out to you, this four bullet list is, what is this report for? What is the goal of this report? To assess all your facilities, to set short and long-term goals, and establish a vision, verify your vision. And then the fourth one, prioritize costs. And so you're going to see this thing tonight, Dr. Gilstrap mentioned there's some cost in here, and that's very intentional, but you, this report is a tool for the board's toolkit, staff as well. It's really important that we get that and understand what this is. It doesn't dictate anything, it doesn't tell you anything, it's a tool for your toolkit, so get to use this tool. It's also a plan. Plans change, of course, they should, but this is a great starting point for you. All right. This next page, disclaimer and use of the plan. I'm highlighting this, because you probably will skip this part and go right to the fun stuff, if you actually do read the report. So highlighted out here, here comes part two of the thing. So prior to implementing any plan, and board, this is for you and anyone who asks you why you adopted a plan with money in it. So prior to adopting this plan, or developing any detailed budgets for financing, all costs should be reviewed and adjusted. That's in the future, so you have done that, right? And then, based on the project elements, and then we talked about the priority of these things, Florisville ISD should use this guide as a means to develop a long-range capital improvement plan in the future, right? That's not this plan, this is just the tools to help you get there. And then it talks about a five-year plan, and then the last sentence that I highlighted right there, the five-year CIP plan should be updated annually. Made a reference way back, I think, to one of the board members, every year, when you go through your budgeting, whenever you like, but that's a great time to do it, bring this plan out, talk about what you're doing, and the goals you want to accomplish for that year. And then every, so often, you might want to update this plan, probably three or five years, no sooner than that, most likely, depending on growth and what you actually do. There's disclaimer number two for it. So I just highlighted that, I want you, I wanted you to see really what this report is about, and that may help you explain what this report is for and how to use it to anyone who might ask you at the ballgame with the grocery store. Okay, so moving forward, just into some key data, just want to show you one chart. This chart is a weighted age. Folks, there's 91 pages, so we got data on every building, lots of stuff, and floor plans and whatnot, but I like this one, because we came up with a weighted age, and on the left is years, look at the 58-year mark for some buildings all the way down. Weighted is just because you do add-ons, and we've averaged out by square footage, this is built one year, this is five years later, et cetera. So you've got some aged buildings. Also in the report, I've been highlighting tonight, but we have a section where we talk about how good you've been maintaining your buildings. You've heard us say that, so that's in here as well. Let's talk about capacity. So one of the big questions you'll get on these reports is, so how much more room do we have in our buildings? How does it feel for the staff teaching? And I'll tell you, we've done a lot of these reports, but we've added a new twist that I really like, thanks to everybody here helping us out, and it's the term optimal capacity. So let me explain that in just a second. If you look to the left of this maximum capacity, this is a very engineered, engineering architecture type number. If you were to max out by TEA rules for square footage standards and teaching ratios, if you maxed out and utilized every space perfectly, you probably would have no home rooms, you'd have to have teachers jumping, I'm not proposing that. But if you did all those things, what is the most you could put in that building? Well, that's the max number. Now, there's a reason we do the max number, because that is a baseline for the maximum you could ever be in that building. For example, I'll just pick elementary south, is my favorite example, a south elementary. So it says 77% of maximum capacity. I can hear the groans already. There's no way it's 77%, right? Well, you would have to do a lot of weird things out there, and it gets more complicated in the text, we talk about how you do that. But if you do, if you examine the optimal capacity, look over that number, 99% full. That's a one on one. There you go.
And this is taking into account early childhood center who's already moved. So before this year, that number was over 100.
That's correct. And if you back up a page or two, you'll see the numbers that we've got in every class. I just wanted to point out that optimal capacity, when we've done the reports and done planning for districts over the years, the many times we've done it, we always end up talking about an optimal capacity, but this is the first time we've actually put it in the report specifically. I'm not sure why it took us so long, but here it is. And so really, we want to look at that number on the far right, and you can see here in the 90s, you've got the one at 87, and then the high school's actually in pretty good shape from a capacity standpoint. It's just one piece of data, but I think this is a good one to look at and be aware of. We do explain a little bit in the report how we come up with optimal, and this is a graph of the same data, so you can see, the blue is your current enrollment, the red is your optimal maximum capacity, there, you can see South Rabbit 99, just baying on the door. So that tells you something. Now, can you live without optimal capacity? Of course you can, your staff has done that before, and of course, they will, they're going to teach those kids how they have to do it, you know, in the closet or whatever it takes, but this is a good guide for you to know when it's time to do things.
Makes sense.
All right, I'm not going to try to let you read this page, but in this report, we've got two different versions of growth projections, and like you saw earlier, if you can see a cohort, you can follow the grade level by color all the way down, there's two of these. One of those is your current growth pattern based on your historical growth, and this one that we've added is based on what we call moderate growth. Generally, that is about two and a half percent of growth a year. It's all explained in here in detail, but you can use this, you know, how fast are we growing? We've got the historical data, and then one that's a little faster with moderate growth. We did not put a high-growth chart in the report. We could, we did one, but it didn't seem to make as much sense. It seemed a little too far out there. So this is just another key piece of data. I just wanted you to see that it's in the report tonight. My next several slides, and I'm going to jump to the end. I'm just going to go to the end of every chapter, if you will, and at the end of every chapter, we have, so, so there's a, I'm saying chapter, at the end of every section, there is a sketch and a layout, the listing of what we looked at on each campus, and there's quite a bit of descriptions. If there's notes on the highlights, this is what this campus really needs more than other things. In the last part of each section, for each campus, this is the, you see, here, there is a cost table, and then the last few notes at the bottom. You've seen this already. This isn't new. We've cleaned up some, some of the data, but it's the same. I might read through all of them, it wouldn't take too long. So I'm going to jump to the next one. There's North Elementary. You can see about a million dollars for the life. This is a 20-year life plan, remember that. Here it is, South. Now, I want to point something out here, the reason I've got my circle on this. This plan proposes that you consider an intermediate school campus, as we've discussed in this room before. Well, we needed a place to put it, and you don't have an intermediate campus for me to categorize it, so we've just chosen for report purposes to put it at South Elementary because that's for the payments. And so that's why it shows up there on South. So just keep that in mind at the end when you see a grab in South Elementary. So let's, most of that money, not all of it, but most of that money is going to a new building. It would not be at that location, right? Just want to point that out. We also talked about that last time. There's the middle school, some, some have heard, there's a new weight room, that's primarily out there. High school are other big hitting campus, but that's because we have a new performing art center, and then actually I'll replace it down here if you ever think, write that as a top priority. So that's a big item. Athletics, new concession restroom, admin cost, pretty minor until future when you need to grow that. And then finally, maintenance, you've got a future maintenance building down the road. So that is the end of all those sections. Really nothing new that I haven't shown you already, so I just rushed through that same, same conversation, that's cleaned up this time. But now I want to talk about the end of the report, and I'm going to just do this one more time because it's in the report. So it's important to note that the cost estimates in this plan are $20, $23. Little hint, they're late $23, but that's important to note. In two years, they won't be the same, I will tell you, and a month, they won't be the same. In '24, the bids we've done in Central Texas, they are pushing up pretty fast again. I hate it, it's sad, I don't like it, but that is the reality of it. Other than just letting you know it's those dollars, we also talk about the things we assume. So recognize it's kind of last year, this year, current dollars, $23. Above this list, we have all these soft, what we call soft costs, surveying, geotech, architectural design, things like that. We already have that built in. So these are finished costs, costs to get to that campus in full would be this number, not just construction. Of course, we have a construction number just to develop that. So again, look at the last line of this circle paragraph, future capital improvement plan should analyze costs and adjust accordingly. So there that is. And so the last table, the one you might flip to at the end about what does this whole thing say? So this just adds all the tables up, total cost for phasing, below this, there's some graphs that are represented, but here's the real data. This is the meat on the stick. There's all eight of your campuses. I'm going to talk about year zero through five, five through 10, and year 10 plus of the columns to the right. Priority one is generally the next five years, doesn't have to be. Some of these items could slide over to two, depending on what you do, the ALCA for that matter. Priority two is generally the next five years after that, give or take. You might do some faster, you might do some slower. And priority three is really beyond 10 years. And if you go to 15 to 20 years, we really can't predict much out that far. So it really doesn't go out there. But it does give you a good idea. Later, when you follow this report's rules and develop a capital improvement plan and come up with budgets, you very likely, or you or your committee or staff, you may intermingle or start to change, and for very good reason. This is a plan worth 30,000 feet. When you dive in, you'll start to make different decisions as you should. The number punchline for $20, $23 is, we have 91 million of needs, and the first priority is 5 million, and priority two, and 32 million, priority three. It's 129 million total. That's a lot. That's a long-term plan as well, because it's not a tomorrow plan. I think I can say that it is a feasible plan. This is something you could get to, you know, to get there. This is not a $2 billion plan or something, even though it's a lot.
And the reminder is, there's no cost to acquire any property that's not in there. So for example, any media school or the admin building over there in phase three, there's no cost.
We do not. There's a paragraph that talks about land acquisition in here. We are not proposing a dollar figure to land. I think I mentioned this last time.
Right.
One day, you're going to have explosive growth. We don't know when that's going to hit the graph right, but it's going to happen one day. We're too close to San Antonio and all this other group. And so if you find a good deal on land, I would always encourage the board to consider it, think through it. You now have a tool to help you think through what you might need. You do have a good bit of land already, so applause, applaud everyone who's helped get you something. That's correct. But you're not hurting for land today, or really even in the next few years.
Thank you.
So section 6.2, implementation of the strategic facility plan. Kind of already said this, but it's going to talk about the cost again, and it's going to, the second paragraph, all priority has been assigned where appropriate today. ISD should use this as a guide to, as a guide, use this guide as a means to develop a long-range capital plan. A rolling five-year plan is there again, and then you should update this plan periodically every two to five years. That's at the end of the report. Just driving that home, I want everybody to get that you're not pushing dollars to anything tonight. But if we don't put cost in a plan, it's not a very valuable plan. So that data is important.
It's got to give us some type of scope about.
That's correct, because if you didn't have the numbers, you'd say, well, it's everything. Then you'd figure it out, and you go, oh, that's horrible. That's what would happen. So my very last slide for you is the very last page of the report, and this is really just a graphic. It's a, we like to use it as a reminder, this kind of polygraphic. I'm going to zoom in just a little bit. This is the one-page graphic of the whole thing. So how do you get a project built? Ideally, our recommendation, you start with the strategic facility plan, and look, you're right there at the end of that. So good job. The next thing you would do for a project is focus, create a focus plan for those specific project budgets, like you just heard, and really think about your exact needs, dive into it. Go from 30,000 feet into the weeds, more time with staff is needed for that, more time with administration. And then once you've really identified those projects, those key projects, and they're in relationships and strategizing, bidding and things like that, how are you going to pay for it? Then you develop a financial plan. Well, we've got this source of money, that source of money, maybe we need to go get a source of money, things like that. And then you're ready for a project. So that's just a nice little graphical to wash you through the process that we like to share, and you, as of right now, accomplish the toughest part, and that is the strategic facility plan.
So the focus plan would be something we could start in the fall, incorporate, again, community, you know, take, take our current community, that, that committee had about 40 people on it, from staff to communities, community members, expand that to make it even larger, and really start to open that up so you have those conversations, and you get that focus plan. And yes, that doesn't, that would have to include some numbers. And that's when you start prioritizing, do we need to move something from priority one to two, or three to one, or whatever that may be. And then that, that group would come in and make that recommendation to the board as far as here's what we feel like would be the best plan moving forward, and potential financial plan to go with that, and then that would come later on. So a timeline, we're probably looking at in the fall, having those conversations, starting that back up after the summer and get the school year started and begin having those conversations.
Yes, sir. Well said.
Community involvement.
Correct. And you know, and you, I know Sledge Engineering, they do not build buildings. That's one of the things we were adamant about when we reached out to them. They don't have that, they're, they're not going to, they're not going to build buildings. That's not where they're going to make their money. However, we will need to still engage with somebody throughout this process, because whenever we get to a certain point, we are going to have to have more information. And so we may be engaging with them again to continue this process. Go from there. Any questions for Sledge Engineering? If not, the administration recommends the board approve the strategic facility plan as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation. Strategic plan.
This is loaded. Makes the motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Boots makes a second. All right. Any further questions? There are none. All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Six to zero. Motion carries.
Thank the board members. Thank you, Mr. Sledge. We'll let you think over it.
We all have a duty.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Now, we will consider approval of 2024, 25 instructional materials, adoption for science and CTE by Dr. Wade.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, and board members. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the proposal to, for our new instructional materials for next full year for proclamation 2024. Next year, we have new science standards and some new standards for a few CTE, current technical education courses. The instructional materials committee that you approved back in the fall met to review publisher materials, and most of our members were able to attend a resource fair that Regent 20 hosted in January. That committee then made a recommendation of the top three publishers, which we brought to the district so that every science and CTE teacher could hear publisher presentations on February the 16th. The committee reviewed teacher input and have made the following recommendations for publishers. Solis Learning Company for kindergarten through eighth-grade science, McGraw-Hill for nine through 12 core science and anatomy and physiology, and Syngage Group for aquatic science, forensic science, health science theory, and medical terminology. A copy of the committee report and those publisher recommendations is included in your board packet. Are there any questions about the materials? If not, administration recommends the board approve the instructional materials for 24, 25 as presented.
I move to accept the recommendation from administration.
I'll accept the administration's recommendation.
I second.
Salva makes the motion. Ms. Reed seconded. Any further question? There are none. Accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero. All right, and Dr. Wade will also, we're going to consider approval of instructional materials allotment, antique certification as well.
All right. So the certification of provision of instructional material survey, which is included in your packet, I believe it's about 16 pages long, is required by the Texas Education Agency every year. And so what we are asking you to do is to certify that all the instructional materials that we submit for the fund, the instructional material allotment fund, have been approved for use, and that the fund will only be used for those purposes allowed by law. You're also certifying that the instructional materials that we have cover all the elements of the standards in the required curriculum for each subject and grade. And that form includes both core, or what we call full resource, as well as supplemental resources, which is something new TA's been asking for, every resource that we are providing. Are there any questions about the certification? Non-administration recommends the board approve the instructional material allotment antique certification as required by the Texas Education Agency.
I'll make the motion to accept the administration's recommendation. Do we have a second? All right. Any further questions, Mr. Boots? Any further questions? Okay. You accept the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you, Dr. Wade. My next item is to consider approval of resolution for submission of grant application for the Florisville ISD Police Department Body Armor Project to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, presented by Mr. Shrope.
Good evening, Dr. Odom, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent of Schools. The Florisville ISD Police Department is requesting permission to submit a grant application for rifle resistance body armor. This grant funds would be used to purchase the new body armor. This is 100% funded grant that does not require matching funds. The application process requires the board to adopt a resolution authorizing administration to apply for the funds. I believe in your packet, there is attached a copy of the resolution. This body armor is for rifle body armor covering the front, side, and back. Purchasing this through Point Blank, we've got, getting seven body armor kits, and that basically totals six, almost $7,000, $6,700, to be exact. With that said, board, are there any questions?
For each one?
Total. I think individually, don't hold me to that. I know that, but yeah, about $7,000 for some. Yes, ma'am. Okay. If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the resolution for submission of grant application for the Florisville ISD Police Department Body Armor Project to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division as presented.
I'm to make, accept the administration's recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Boots makes the motion to accept the administration's recommendation, and Mr. Flair seconded. Any further questions? Okay. All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Six to zero.
Thank you, board.
I guess we're not going to, I know we're just applying for this grant, but we're not going to require them to wear it all the time or anything like that, but.
This is the rifle body armor.
Right. In case something happens, you've got something to put on, but you all, we're not going to require them to.
It's in their vehicle.
I know, it's, we're just applying.
Correct.
You got something to go on.
We have something to put on.
I think last year, we did the ballistic shields.
Yeah.
You got it. So you got the tool at least now, so hopefully we're getting it.
All right. Our final item is to consider approval of purchases exceeding $50,000. I'll send it to Shrope.
Yes, sir. Florisville ISD currently ensures that every second through 12th grade student has access to a device for instruction on a one-to-one ratio, which they take home at the end of the school day. For our kindergarten students and our first graders, devices are provided at a two-to-one ratio, which are stored in classroom carts. Pre-K classrooms also have devices in carts, but they are at a four-to-one ratio. As with any technology, these devices can and will experience failures, slow performance, or become unsupported by the manufacturer over time. Our student device fleet comprises of Chromebooks for first through 12th graders and iPads for our pre-K and kinder students, each typically with a lifespan of around six years. However, due to nationwide device shortages post-pandemic, Google has extended the life of many Chromebooks by an additional two to four years. Previously, the district needed to replace one-sixth of the fleet annually. With the extended life of Chromebooks, fewer devices will need replacements this year. This year, our order will be for roughly one-eighth of our Chromebook fleet and includes the device, a management license, along with a protective case. We received three quotes for the purchase and found CW, CDWG to be the most cost-effective of the vendors. The quote for 635 units totaled $153,727.50 and is provided in your packet along with the other quotes received. Board action is required for this purchase since it exceeds the $50,000 limit set, set forth in policy CH local. Board trustees, do you have any questions pertaining to the student device refresh?